So I had sugar because the Easter basket.
Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. And it is a little beyond 7:30. I'm going to call the meeting on Milton Common Council for April 16th, 2019 to order. And the first item is the real call.
Coon?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Teal?
Here.
West?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
All present?
So the next item is the comments from the citizens present. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. Anybody who wants to speak, go ahead. Date your name and you have three minutes.
My name is Richard Maury. I am the Airport Manager and Fixed Space Operator at the Middleton Municipal Airport, Maury Field. And did you say address, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I live in Wannakee. Sorry. That's okay. All right. I have a couple of concerns about the minimum standards that you're going to be considering for adoption tonight. At the last Airport Commission meeting, there was a fairly substantial change made. And this was April 8th, dropping the grandfather clause from the minimum standards. Now, what that means is that existing contracts would, can be modified simply by, from my understanding, modifying the minimum standards. This actual dropping of that provision from the old minimum standards does modify the current contract. This is my concern. It, if the city has the ability to modify a contract unilaterally, then what value is that contract to the other party? This is not simply in my consideration. I'm not going to be the fixed base operator there forever. Probably in another decade or so, I'll consider retirement if I'm lucky enough to get a renewal. But the point is, one of a legal, and I'm not a lawyer, but if, you know, I understand that things have to be modified periodically in contracts. Our contracts have existing provisions to modify those items. I would like to see that be the mechanism for these changes. And in the final analysis, I have only about two years left on this contract in, you know, that would be the longest period that any of this would possibly be non-standard. But that's beside the point. The point is, it really reduces the value of the contract. The second thing I would like to point out is, today, we received a new rewritten version, substantially, essentially the same, but it is a new version of the minimum standards. This is not the document that the city, excuse me, the Airport Commission approved with provision to try to work out between myself and the city the objection of the minimum standards. So in looking at it, it seems to be a fairly complete document, but if you look to page five, you see that there is a, you know, to be defined as the Airport Manager. So it's not really a complete document. There, it's missing some areas. And I think to expect us to have four or five hours to review a new document, make sure that it is indeed in compliance with what the Airport Commission approved, is asking us a little bit too much. I think the process, it needs to, if we're going to use this version, I think, one, we should address the grandfather provision, and two, we should have a little more time to review it respectfully.
Thank you. Larry, you want, do you have any answers?
Let's do that when it comes up on the agenda.
Agenda.
Okay, all right. Anybody else who wants to speak? Thank you, Ray.
Dan Nutt, Middleton Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to say thank you to Alders, Richard, and Teal for your years of service. It's been nice being in the gallery with you for these years and hope that all of your wildest dreams come true after the end of the meeting tonight.
I'm sure Paul does, too.
Yeah, Paul's back there. He's ready. Anyhow, thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else who wants to speak? All right. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Move approval? Second.
Second? Give somebody a second, okay.
I second.
Yeah, Mark did.
Sorry, just didn't hear it.
Okay, all those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Now, some of the citizens have complained that we are not audible on the tape, so please listen, try to speak in the microphone. So, thank you. Now, we are on to the old business, the appointments of the Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee. That's three people here, Jade Hopefield and Rich Maury and Deanna Porter.
Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve this, if you're nominated, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now, we are on to the agreements. The Specialized Aviation Service Operations Agreement with Capital Flight LLC.
I'd make a motion to approve the Specialized Aviation Service Operations Agreement with Capital Flight LLC.
I have, I'll second for discussion. I have a question. Larry, should we, should we take the minimum standards first and come back to this?
Yeah, probably. I think that would be the right thing to do, right?
Anticipated that they would preclude it.
What's that?
Anticipated that they would come and, minimum standards would be first, and then the SASSO agreement for the particular operator would be second. Okay.
Okay, so let's go to the minimum standards.
Page 104. Minimum standards is going to be on the third.
Number two.
Okay, it's miscellaneous, airport minimum standards.
Justalineous.
All right, miscellaneous item number two.
Mark, could I call on you to possibly say a few words and address this issue? That's your stat.
Alder Teal, what questions do you have?
Just explain.
Just to explain, okay. So when the city got into the airport business, we, like, I believe every other airport, adopted this document called minimum standards. And it was based on a template, there's various templates floating around it. If you look at different airports, each uses a template that probably was borrowed from another airport. There's a couple of different versions flying around, no pun intended. And we adopted a version that was a bit more antiquated. And over the last couple of years, I have worked with the Airport Commission, the city attorney, and also consulted with the Bureau of Aeronautics on overhauling our standards so that they reflected contemporary practices, for example, no longer requiring a landline telephone, I mean, something as basic as that, to more substantial issues like minimum insurance coverage. So, and I put it in a brand-new format based on a template that I liked, but incorporating all the ideas we had in ours, too. It's been quite an effort. It's taken a lot more time than I anticipated. Alder Burke has provided some very good comments and suggestions that I don't have any concerns with. I appreciated the effort on his part to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. I don't think, between what Mike and I have discussed and with Larry, I don't think there's any substantive issues that are, you know, that, give me pause, from what we saw, right. The issue that Rich Maury brings up is really the key issue about the grandfather provision. Our land leases state that every airport operator and less C shall be bound by minimum standards as they are revised from time to time. So that is language that we have in our land lease. I didn't actually review the FBO agreement specifically, Larry, did you today?
Sorry, no.
I just now, did you? Okay, and does it have that language in there, too?
I don't recall.
You don't recall? So the concern that Rich is raising tonight, it's true that this was a recent addition at the last Airport Commission meeting because it was something we got from the Bureau of Aeronautics as a concern. So, so it is a fairly recent addition. The insurance coverage, too, for requiring, Rich didn't focus on it here, but, but there's been a couple of other changes that he had questions about. So if the council wishes to defer this for one more round of review, I certainly have no objection to that. You know, we might as well get it right. If you have concerns, we should make sure we have it done right. But Larry and I and Mike are comfortable with the removal of the grandfather agreement.
How soon does this need to pass?
How soon does it need to? It's, it's, there's not, it's not time-sensitive for tonight. Alder Teal was pointing out about the SASSO agreement with Capital Flight. Those two have been linked together because it was actually the addition, the arrival of Capital Flight that caused us to look at our old minimum standards and thought, okay, there's a lot of things here that could be modernized and that we should modernize. And so those two have been linked together. Capital Flight has been operating without an agreement, as Maury Airplane Company has over the years. It's not, you know, it's something that we want to, they have agreed to the agreement, the SASSO, the Specialized Aviation Services Agreement, they've agreed to the terms of that agreement, so that's not in dispute. They've agreed to the new minimum standards. But Rich Maury, Maury Airplane Company, has obviously a couple of concerns that he would like to see addressed.
But considering it's not urgent and there are several objections, and I don't see any, you know, reason why we couldn't defer it for the next meeting or meeting later. Do you want to address some of the questions or you want to talk about?
Well, yeah, this is the time. The concerns that Mr. Maury raised about standards for an airport being fixed, what he's referring to as a grandfather clause, is a significant one. Simply because if, if the minimum standards were in the nature of a contract, they would be binding upon both parties, basically no matter what, upon breach, you could be sued for violation. And there are provisions that clearly would be things that could not be changed in the relationship. So, for example, if the city decided to double the rent in the middle of a term, clearly that would not be possible without violating the standards because, of course, the contracted rate is something that is essential to the consideration between both the city and the operator. But the issues on the minimum standards that are causing the concerns now are ones that have been raised by and reviewed by the Bureau of Aeronautics, which always, under its powers, including its contracts with the city, reserves the right to change the standards that it applies to the city due to changing circumstances. The one I can remember is if they, if they wanted to take over the airport as a military feature, unlikely though that might be, they could just do that regardless of what our contracts would otherwise say. That's a police power provision. And I think that most of the provisions in the minimum standards are police power provisions. That is ones that, in the interest of public safety, in the interest of providing the best possible protection for the airport and for users of the airport, things that may have been in place for five, 10, 15 years, may have been outmoded by the passage of time. Just, for example, insurance being a primary one. As things have changed at the airport, new problems have been identified, and the Airport Commission has, in my view, appropriately responded to those by addressing amendments to the minimum standards. So, in a general principle, contracts should not be able to be changed. That's, that's a general principle, and I understand and agree with it. But when we're talking about standards relating to the public safety and the appropriate management of the airport, this is something that the Bureau of Aeronautics has said is appropriate, and I agree with the views of the Bureau of Aeronautics.
I would add one thing, Mayor, if that's okay.
Yeah, let me ask some questions to Larry here. Number one, we are not using police power in this case. That's not the case at all. Number two, the Bureau of Aeronautics did not initiate it, and it's, it's something we just wanted to update it. So I don't think this is the initiative from the Bureau of Aeronautics because there was a, some safety concerns. And the third is, then you have a contract, I, I don't, well, I guess he has a valid point, that you can't just change it unilaterally. And especially in this case, since it's not something which Bureau is demanding, it's something which we are doing because we want to update these standards. So I think we are talking about different things here.
With all due respect, I disagree with your position because of the fact that this, this is a, this is not purely a contract. This is, this is a situation where the city is providing permission for a party to use the city's lands in accordance with our minimum standards, in accordance with FAA and Bureau of Aeronautics standards, and thus, it is not a matter simply to be construed in light of traditional contract principles. I agree with you to the extent which I previously provided that in, that the city would not have the right to unilaterally change the financial components of its arrangements with Mr. Maury. That would be unfair and I think would be a breach of our agreement. But when we're talking about updating insurance requirements based upon experience and based upon risk factors that may have changed or not been known at the time that the original agreement was made, in my opinion, that's a valid act for the city council to make.
Well, change the definition here because he has to pay higher insurance premium. So, but also, you know, I don't know how much is the, I haven't looked at any, there is no references in this minimum standards at all, that what is the source of it when you create such a document? You know, there has to be some references. Where is it coming from? I haven't seen any at all. So, so I don't know where it was derived from and, you know, when you, when you want to create such a document, you know, you probably look at multiple sources, which you probably did, but those should be referenced.
But I could.
Yeah, first Mike and then Mark.
I just wanted to say, I've been, I was part of the original staff for the airport when we first purchased it. The FAA and Bureau of Aeronautics required the minimum standards be adopted by the city for the airport. I believe it's built into our covenants with the FAA.
Grant assurances.
Federal, yeah, covenants and grant assurances, Federal Aviation Administration, who ultimately has the say over most things that happen with the airport, although we locally manage it. The minimum standards that we've had have been acceptable but not updated since 2003, when the airport first became operational. So it is required. Also, to the comment about the police powers, I think it's commonly misunderstood as a legal term. So just to explain that a little bit further, it's a, not law enforcement-related. When Larry says police powers, it is embedded in the law as a public safety responsibility of the local government is what a police power means in a general sense. Larry, you can explain that better than I probably, but that's, I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on what the police powers were about.
Yeah, just like eminent domain, I guess.
It's not law enforcement, though.
Yeah, no, I, I understand it, so. Yes, Mark.
I just wanted to say that I'm happy to provide anybody with the, the working drafts that I was working with along the way, including other documents, the templates that I consulted. For example, Rock County, Janesville Airport, Oshkosh Airport, Iowa County, had a lot of similar language. And so I borrowed heavily from their templates because that was something that was broadly used and accepted and provided originally by the Bureau of Aeronautics. So the language, the source of it is, is generally from existing templates used by other airports with some adaptation to Middleton, which we are allowed to do. The basic principle is, we need to operate the airport consistent with our grant assurances, as Mike was just mentioning. And we also need to treat everybody fairly, equally. You know, we cannot give preference to any one particular operator. Everyone has to have the same opportunity. And the last point I wanted to make is that these are minimum standards, which means anybody can exceed the standards, of course. We encourage that.
I just would like it, you know, yes, little, just a minute. So if you could, you know, cite your sources, because it's, it's a pretty important document, and, you know, you could put appendix at the end or the citations, you know, as normally I think should be. Howard and then Susan.
Larry, a question for you, if I might. With the fact that the Bureau of Aeronautics here in town, BOA, has encouraged us to put those clause, put that clause in our, in our standards, are you comfortable with the fact that their being there doesn't unduly affect the terms and conditions of the agreement and would find it acceptable?
You mean the grandfather clause?
Yes.
To the, yes, I would be comfortable with it, with the understanding it doesn't affect police power standards of the airport, which we are required to change when the FAA says so or the Bureau, and which we then pass on to our hangar land leases and our other parties with whom we contract.
Should that statement be put into the agreement sometime, somehow, or?
Could be.
Susan?
Getting.
Are you done, Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Susan.
Getting a little confused, because I thought this was to be sure that we have operators that are providing the appropriate insurance for new safety levels.
That is a big part of it.
And by leaving, are you asking to leave in the grandfather clause?
Yeah, Larry's just told you, it's acceptable.
So that means a operator doesn't have to meet those safety standards?
No. It means that safety standards are, are, should be uniformly applied to anybody who is operating at the airport.
Okay.
So what we're, what we're saying, then, is that this, either way, it doesn't affect Mr. Maury. Because if we leave the grandfather clause in, as you've discussed, then he still would fall under any standards that we change as far as insurance because that's a safety issue.
You may disagree with that, but that's my opinion.
I'm, I'm asking for a legal opinion.
Yes.
So from your legal opinion? So what we're arguing about is enough, I mean, just take it out.
Leave it in.
And, and like we, we went through our draft, the Airport Commission has been working on this for a long time. Right, Howard? We have.
Two years.
Two years, ever since I've been on it, and Howard's been on it for, well, we all know Howard's been on it forever. We have spent a great deal of time, a great deal of effort, and we've done everything we could to be fair to all parties. And I don't think that taking out this grandfather clause affects any party. It just makes sure that everybody has the same minimum standards, the same standard of safety. Doesn't change, as Larry said, it doesn't change Mr. Maury's contract. It is timed, I believe, we've held off with the SASSO agreement for over a year trying to put this thing together. It's time to get these minimum standards passed so that we can move on to all the other things that this airport has to do with our new master plan for the airport and all the other things that we're looking at. To defer this and set this back another month, I, I can't understand why we would even contemplate that for something that really isn't an issue.
So are you proposing that put that grandfather clause in there and move forward?
No, I'm saying that, strike the grandfather clause, just as the, as Mr. Opitz put it together in the minimum standards.
Which is what is before us right now.
Which is what is before us right now.
Right.
And if I could just comment further about the history behind this, like Howard said, it's been two years. And what prompted this is Capital Flight coming in and offering new businesses, new services, and we're being slow to respond to that. Initially, we thought, Larry and I, that it would be a fixed base operator, similar to Maury Airplane Company. But then we found that we could go with this special aviation services operator. That identifies, it's not the item we're talking about right now, but it is linked, like we talked about before. It identifies the services that Capital Flight could undertake. They have been undertaking it for the past two and a half, three years. And we have not yet come up with a special agreement that puts them on more equal footing with Maury Airplane Company. Right now, Rich Maury's company is paying a higher level of insurance than Capital Flight. In fairness, Capital Flight needs to pay a higher level of insurance, and that's what would be effectuated here. If you wait three weeks, when the next council, the new council meets, I don't think much at all would change of this. We have, from the Bureau of Aeronautics, it's on pages 114, 115 of the minimum standards, packet number pages 114, 115, the statements that came from the Bureau of Aeronautics specifically saying that we should not have the grandfather clause in the minimum standards. Now, to the point about the changes that Robert made within the last day, those are not substantive changes that change the effect of the minimum standards. Those are more form. We took parentheticals out of table, number one, that really had no effect on the substance. We uniformly made owner throughout the document, as opposed to, some cases, there was not owner, but it should have been. It's the city is the owner of the airport. And then one where we were talking about the fuel farm, and Robert caught a very important thing, and that is only an FBO, under our minimum standards and our FBO agreement, can have operation of a fuel farm. So we corrected that. All of this is actually to make things more equitable, equitable for Maury Airplane Company. I think, you know, like Larry said, and I think he addressed Rich's concern, is that if there is a financial aspect, aside from the insurance aspect, which is for public safety, if there's a financial aspect, we would owe it to Maury Airplane Company to pay more for the Airport Manager Agreement that we have.
Could Laurie please read the actual motion again so we're clear?
There wasn't a motion on this.
Oh, okay.
So I have a question for Mike or whoever. So, so the Bureau, Bureau of Aeronautics would have the uniform policy. It is not just for, for us. It will be for all the airports in Wisconsin, right?
Yeah, they're recommending all those grandfather clauses coming, coming out of minimum standards like we have before us right now.
Yes, Susan.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the changes that have been presented tonight to the minimum standards.
Adopt the new minimum standard?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Can I throw out that a lot of work has been done in the last, well, since Saturday, by me to clean up certain things? And so in the packet that's in front of you, I want to just make sure that we're all in the same.
And that includes?
Yeah, and the one caveat to that is, as Mr. Maury pointed out, there is one section in the glossary terms where, throughout the document, there's a few places where they talk about, like, uh... was it aviation manager? Or director? Well, there was one place it was director, two places where it was manager, nowhere is that defined. So I added in a spot for the definition of what the heck that is. And I made it common throughout the rest of the document, but I didn't actually define what that is, because it's not my place to tell other people what that is. I'll leave that up to Mr. Opitz, the Airport Commission, and our city attorney to clean up that one last bit. But otherwise, I'd say this is ready to move forward.
So do you accept as a part of your motion?
I just wanted to add one more point. And the reason it's before you tonight, and even though there were a couple typos here and there, it's the substance and the direction is what we wanted your agreement tonight. Because we are going to put this in ordinance form and clean up, tidy up some of these inconsistencies. And I apologize if there were still a few left. I frankly, the reason why there's director and manager is because I borrowed a template from different airports, and sometimes they use different language. So I'm sorry I didn't catch them all. But the idea is to put this, adopt this in ordinance form, and so we will have this all cleaned up at that point.
Yeah, actually, I remember that I saw that table one, or whatever that table is, it was a complete mess. And what I saw now, it's much easier to understand, it's a.
But the reason I put it in the way I had it is because I wanted, I actually, Mayor, was documenting my sources. The reason it, they had all those numbers, is it showed the range of areas that were in place at other airports that I consulted. And I was trying to show you that here's what our number was based on.
It's just the way it was put, so.
It's a, it's a difficult balance between showing your work and the marked up text versus giving you a clean document. So I tried to strike a balance and didn't quite get it right, so I will.
We appreciate the work you've done, Mark.
Yeah, great job, but if you would have put a note that this is the ranges, that would have probably.
It actually was, it was in the, well, I'm sorry, it was in my draft, but then I took it out of this one, so I apologize.
All right. Any other questions or comments? The motion is to approve with all various comments and Larry's and Mark's, other people's blessings, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to item number one under the agreements.
Number one under agreements?
Can we just go to the old motion?
I made the, I, do I make this? Mr. Burke made the motion. I made the motion?
Okay.
Okay, or approval, right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments on SASSO? All those in favor of the motion already made and seconded, say yes, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, so. We are on to agreement for engineering services with the R.S. Smith Incorporated for Baskerville Harbor Bulkhead Repair.
Can I, can I just have a brief explanation of where we're at and where we're going?
I'll, I'll move approval, so we can get on that agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, Sean.
Sure. So Baskerville Harbor is on the north side of Lake Mendota. It empties Pheasant Branch Creek into Lake Mendota. Along both sides of that, there's steel sheet pile pounded in vertically to create a bulk headline. It defines essentially the edge of the channel versus private property. A portion of that peeled apart and is in the channel at this point, with significant erosion affecting two or three property owners. So we want to get some plans together to have a contractor restore the sheet pile.
And is, I saw that the phases were for May, July, and August. Is that a hope to have it replaced towards late summerish or when, towards fallish?
If we can get there before winter, I think we'll be doing well. This is a pretty aggressive schedule and.
I was thinking that, but I appreciate your comments and explanation. I did go and look at the property today, or one of the properties. And just so you guys know, it's like six feet out is missing.
It might be more than that.
Like 10 feet, it's pretty significant. And the property owner said that when it, whenever it rains, like say you get a good half inch, one inch, we had really big waves last week. There's like literally dirt just going right in. So it is a very large concern, and thank you for having this on the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Emily, I went there and looked at it as well. So there are some areas where there's almost 10 feet of the sidewalk is washed away, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to item number three under agreements. That is the development agreement between the City of Middleton, Damming Investors LLC, and Chartwell Wisconsin Enterprises LLC for proposed modification in addition to former Globe University Building, 1345 Damming Way.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Robert.
I'm sorry, this isn't quite ready.
Oh.
So I hope you could do it subject to attorney.
To attorney.
Definitely.
Is that okay? Okay, yes, Robert.
That, that was my point, is there were some, a few comments within here that were not yet defined. I assumed that the city council would need, sorry, city's attorney, council to our, us, would correct those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve this development agreement between the City of Middleton and Damming Way Investors, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to ward a bid court professional service. So this is item number one, accepting a proposal for well number eight rehabilitation.
I'll move approval as recommended by finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Somebody was asking, where is well number eight, Sean, do you know where that is?
I do.
That's good, if you want to share.
It's the one on West Point Road, just off of Century Avenue.
Oh, okay.
And now we know.
Okay, thank you. That was good, Sean. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number two, ward a bid for University Avenue Water and Sewer Improvements.
Move approval as recommended by finance.
Second. Which remind us what approval was for this one?
It was subject to, it was in accordance with the Public Works Commission, committee.
Which was to deny, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
So this is actually to deny, right?
Right.
Okay.
Just wanted to be clear.
Both committees.
Two is approval and three is deny.
Yeah, two is approval.
Okay.
We do want to engage G Pro.
It's the lighting that is denial.
Thank you, and that's, appreciate the clarification from all parties.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the ward or bid for University Avenue Water and Sewer Improvement, say aye? Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to the bid.
Go for it.
Which is, yes, Robert.
Thank you.
It is the ward or bid for University Avenue Traffic Signal and Lighting Improvements.
I, I would make the motion that we deny this, which is the recommendation from PWC.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? There was only one bid, and it was way higher than the engineers estimate.
I do have one quick question.
Yes.
Would Sean be able to share how significantly different?
Well, I can, I can only compare it to the estimate that, that our design engineer worked up for us. And in the grand scheme, I would qualify it as being about double what we had expected.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you very much.
And you are proposing the staff will handle it, or is that, or you are going to?
Yeah, that was the only option left, given the timing.
Okay, okay, all right. All those in favor of rejecting the ward or bid for University Avenue Traffic Signal and Lighting Improvement, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes for rejecting this bid. We are on to miscellaneous, and item number one, selection of new playground at Woodside Heights Park.
Move approval as recommended by finance to, for the bid to go to the Bolin Company, propose, company in an amount not to exceed $49,831.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the selection of new playground at Woodside Heights Park as motion by Susan West, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We already took care of number two, and we are on to flood recovery financing plan.
But there was, I don't think there was any motion, there was no action from finance.
It was information.
Information.
Are there any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we move on to the next item, this is the ordinances. And there's a ordinance, and there's, this is the first reading, final action, may be taken on approval of the motion to suspend the rules under section 1.07 of Middleton General Ordinances.
This, this one has not yet had its public hearing before the Plan Commission, so the recommendation will be to defer this item.
Okay.
I would move deferral until the Plan Commission has a public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the deferral, say, yes, yes, Robert.
I, I can ask this question in three weeks, or whenever we next meet too, I suppose. But can somebody on LNO tell me the purpose of changing it from one year to five years?
This was a state mandated?
Yeah, state mandate.
That helps a lot, thank you.
Real simple.
Okay. So with all that clarification out of the way, all those in favor of this deferral, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously on to resolutions. 2019-16, final assessment for University Avenue Kauga Park Reconstruction.
I'll move approval as recommended by finance and public works.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? It's good our University Avenue is getting fixed, so all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, 2019-17, final assessment for Terrace Avenue Resurfacing. It's about time.
I'll move approval as recommended by finance and public works.
Second.
Any question or comments? Yes, Robert.
Yeah, I have a quick question, at least on leave, it is page 157 of the packet. There's own, no, I guess it's actually the next page, 158 of the packet. There are only four addresses or parcel numbers that are listed as being assessed as part of this. And I guess I would ask the question, aren't there more?
There are more properties, but we're doing limited curb and gutter replacement, which is triggering limited driveway apron replacements. So there's no need to assess most property owners.
That helps, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, with that clarification, any other questions? All those in favor of this motion for the final assessments for Terrace Avenue Resurfacing, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number three, 2019-19, support for submitting DNR stewardship grant application for Lakeview Shelter.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion to support for submitting the DNR stewardship grant application for Lakeview Shelter, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. 2019-20, approving the assignment of 2018 general fund, year-end fund balances.
Move approval as recommended by finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the assignment of 2018 general fund year-end fund balances, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to 2018-21, authorizing the reappropriation of 2018 year-end excess capital fund balances into 2019 and related budget adjustments.
Move approval as recommended by finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Well, all those in, yeah, okay, yes, Mark.
I, I just have to say that at some point, everyone here is going to have to come to grips with the fact that we have agreed to spend money that we don't have identified sources of funds for. And if we continue to do this, we're going to put ourselves in a difficult situation to get out of. Every year this comes up, it's about figuring out what to do with year-end balances. Every year we have unfunded commitments, and the two have to start coming together. And it's just prudent budgeting process, it's prudent spending, it's prudent finance. And at some point, everyone on the council is going to have to understand that we need to identify and secure these sources of funds for the commitments we have before we spend new money.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of authorizing the reappropriation of 2018 year-end excess capital fund balances into 2019 or later budget adjustments, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so let's.
It's, it's less than three quarters, so it doesn't pass. For budget amendments, you need a three quarters.
Oh, okay, so it does not.
This is not a budget amendment, this is a.
It is.
It says budget adjustment. I read, read this as a budget amendment.
Okay.
It's seven votes?
Six.
I mean, six. I heard, I heard at least three votes against it.
Typically, for capital carryovers, we haven't followed the statutory budget amendment process since we're taking items that were budgeted in one year and just authorizing the carryover into the subsequent year. Different than if we had an amendment to increase the budget and add a completely new item. I defer to the city attorney, but.
Well, I, I, well, Bill, why don't you stay up there just for a second? I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. I mean, the, the result of this is not to change, obviously, the budgeted levy or, but, but it is, it is items in the budget that are changing, right?
It's item, it's funds that were appropriated in 2018, and the authorization is being made to spend that money in 2019. So it is crossing budget years. It's not adjusting budgeted levy or budgeted capital borrowing.
So what is it called? I mean, I don't understand, just for financing purposes, what this kind of animal is relative to the city budget. Which is why I gave my opinion. I thought it was either budgeted or it was not budgeted, and there wasn't a third category. But please correct me if I'm, if I'm, if I am understanding this wrong.
So I, I'll, let me step in. I would argue that this is not, these are not budgeted items, because we had a budget document that included all the various spending. What this is, are, it's a, it, these are excess funds which were not appropriated, right? So it's.
Not used.
Not used, right? So it is not part of the original budget. And it's essentially trying to, what we're doing here is making a claim on unassigned surplus.
I, I would just clarify that these dollar amounts, the budget authorization included a total with this dollar amount. The recommendation and what's included here would be to authorize the carryover from one year to the next, and it's adjusting the purposes. So. So, in simple numbers, if we had five million dollars of capital in twenty eighteen, this is part of that five million dollar appropriation. The action would be to authorize the use in twenty nineteen, and for a couple items, it's adjusting the purpose. We've called that a budget adjustment. I, I guess, I know there is a statutory language about a budget amendment, which we've done for items that would affected certainly our revenues that we have coming in or capital borrowing. I guess if this would fall under that statutory definition, that's the question.
Well, if, if we had, let's call it a budget amendment, if we, if we had a budget item of fifty thousand dollars for a new dog catcher, and then we did a budget amendment apply it to a new police officer, that would be a budget amendment. And I would assume it would require a three quarters vote, if it's all in the same year. So am I understanding that...
Well, I would say, if, in the general fund, for example, if we have money within the police department, and one line item or item is over and the other is under, and the total appropriation for the police department has changed, we have not treated that as a budget amendment. That might be what we would call a budget adjustment.
Understand that.
If we're taking money that was in the budget in the general fund for the senior center and moving that to the police department, then I would say, yes, that would be a budget amendment.
I, I get that, and I agree with you, that so long as it's, it's from categories of the budget to other categories of the budget that are totally separate, that would be a budget amendment, and thus subject to the three quarters vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so...
Yes, that's the question. I mean, this is all within the capital projects fund of the budget. It's, there are allocations for different purposes than the original projects, so it's within the same category, but it is clearly a different project. And I think that's the question of, is that sufficiently different than the original appropriation to require a formal budget amendment, which also requires publication?
I, I would argue that the fact that these are, that we have now trans, we've gone from one year to another, that the appropriate treatment of these excess funds is to close them out against unassigned surplus. And what this action is trying to do is to say, hey, wait a minute, the budget year is still open, even though it's clearly closed, and to reuse these funds.
So that's still what needs to be...
Isn't, is, in the absence of this, isn't the appropriate accounting action is to close these, these excess funds out against unassigned surplus?
It's not, it wouldn't go through unassigned, which is in the general fund, because these are in the capital projects fund, so it's...
Regardless.
It's restricted fund balance for capital projects, and we're reallocating which projects it's for.
Well, I, I, I just want to say that I think Bill's explanation that this is all within capital projects before and in capital projects after does make it, and I'm, I'm sorry I didn't catch that significance before, that would be more similar to in the operating budget doing an allocation within a department, in which case it would not require a three quarters vote. I still think this is a, something that, I don't think it matters that it's from year to year, but I do think it matters that if it's, if it's within the capital project fund, and thus not really a budget amendment. So then we need to know what the vote was.
Emily, you...
Can we have a roll call vote?
Okay, so Emily, you had a question, right?
Actually, I was just going to say that it's, it's just a simple reallocation, as the attorney said, and that it's the intent of, of the spending from year to year, doesn't have to be, it could be done either way, so I agree with both of you. My vote was for, to approve it.
Laurie, so Susan asked for a roll call vote.
Kuhn is a yes then, Burke?
No.
Teal?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, five, three.
Five, three.
So what is, what do you say?
Well, based on Bill's explanation that these are all within the same budgeted category, the capital projects fund, I think that it, that does not require a three quarters vote, because as, as Bill stated, and which I totally agree from experience myself, moving things within specific line items of one category of the budget is done all the time, and is not considered a statutory budget amendment requiring a three quarters vote.
Okay, so in that case, the motion passes five, three. Wow, we are on to big thing now, the recognition of Elder Richard and Teal. And I'm going to start with the proclamation for Elder Joanna Richard.
So Mr. Mayor, I, I have some words to say, I don't know if it's appropriate now or after the proclamation.
Whatever you like to, yeah, go ahead and say it.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, there's a, just a few words I wanted to say as I end my term. I want to start with thank yous. Part of my faith is that you always start with gratitude, and I'm very grad, grateful for my colleagues on the council. I won't miss the meetings, but I will miss you, so, and I've enjoyed working with you. I have a big thank you to city staff, especially those that have staffed the committees that I've served on, Mike on workforce housing, Bill on finance, Melissa on finance and personnel, Sean, just, it's been a joy to work with you on Public Works all eight years. Abby, who has done sustainability, and Mark Opitz for PBT. We have the best staff, and I just, I, it's, the professionalism of the staff is, is unbelievable, and I just appreciate all of you. There are other city staff that I have worked with as well. Eileen, I will miss you very much. We'll go off to the sunset together. Chuck, my friend, you are a tremendous leader for our community and for our state. I appreciate you very much. Matt, I will miss you, even though I never really got to work with you much, but I'm so glad that we hired you, and I was on the Personnel Committee to help do that. And then my good friend Jill Krantz. So if I didn't mention you, it's just, there are a few that I wanted to call out, and I am so proud of your professionalism, and you make us all look very good. Though I have some parting advice for you, I know that, this would be the last time you have to listen to me, but a couple things I wanted to say. I, I would hope that you would trust the voters. We are a progressive community, and it's very evident through the referendums that we've had on climate, on the schools, on stormwater, and I think this community is willing and wants to invest to keep us a vibrant community, and I would hope that you would remember that. Those referendums have been with overwhelming majorities. I would ask that you continue to keep Middleton moving forward. Middleton Hills, for those of you that weren't around, some of you might have not even been born, but Middleton Hills was a very controversial project, and I can't imagine Middleton today without Middleton Hills. That's the type of bold leadership, I think, I would hope that will continue on this council. I would hope that you would do more for the youth center and for our recreational programs for youth. It is the investment that we need to keep making for the city, and I would hope you pay attention to workforce housing. It is going to be a challenge, it's a challenge throughout the United States, it's going to continue to be a challenge, and we have to be innovative of how we want to go about new zoning, because without that, I think we're not going to, if we're, continue to stay in the same box we are in, we're not going to address that important program. And then finally, I would hope that we'd preserve our natural resources. We have a gem of a community. We are in the most beautiful areas in the state. The Pheasant Branch Conservancy is just, every time we walk through it, Paul, it's, it's, we see something new. We see a bird, I love just wa, walking through it, but we bike through it. I just saw the, many states are, are trying to attract talent, right? Because we have such a low unemployment rate. They're advertising bikes and trails, that's how they're attracting talent. If we continue to do this right with our parks and our ponds and our conservancy area, we will attract the talent, we'll continue to attract talent in Middleton, and we'll do it right, because that's what makes Van Nutt very happy, because that's economic development. Those are the, the infrastructure that we need for economic development. So I would hope that you would continue to do that. And then finally, thank you to Paul, who made meals for me, so I could attend these meetings, took care of the house. Eight years ago when I started, I don't know if you knew this, I know Mike and others might have that were close, but my dad passed away three days before the election.
Oh, jeez.
He was a public servant, he worked for the City of Rivers in the Water and Light Department, that's why I love Public Works so much. And they set the path for me for public service, and it's been a great eight years. So I hope that you'll continue to work as colleagues, and you'll continue to move the city forward, and I couldn't be happier to be represented now by Katie Nelson. Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Joanna, that was amazing, so...
Read it.
I'm going to read the proclamation, absolutely. Honoring Joanna Richard for her distinguished eight-year tenure of the Middleton Common Council, on the Middleton Common Council, whereas Joanna Richard has ably and faithfully served the City of Middleton for the past eight years, representing Third District, and whereas during her distinguished tenure, Joanna has been a strong advocate for providing essentially city services and personnel to match. Along with the entire council, Joanna made it possible that Middleton was the only city in the state not to cut its employees' pay in the aftermath of Act Ten. She also has participated in and supported many successful city initiatives, including advocacy for a hundred percent renewable energy resolution, redevelopment of downtown Middleton, development of important workforce housing and sustainability project, establishment of the stormwater utility, building of the municipal operations center, advocacy for the Pheasant Branch Conservancy and its trails network, support for numerous park projects, and fostering of extensive tax incremental district projects and infrastructure throughout Middleton. And whereas Joanna has served on many city committees over her tenure, including long tenures on the personal, personal finance, license and ordinance, and public works committees, as well as on workforce housing, sustainability, and art. And whereas Joanna's thoughtful, intelligent, and ethical approach and leadership, Middleton City Government has been a tremendous asset over these past eight years. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim and commend Joanna for her eight years of distinguished service, leadership, and good neighbor spirit on behalf of the residents and city of Middleton. We wish her and her family good health and happiness, and we thank her for her continued public service with the State Department of Workforce Development. We know that department is in good hands. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on sixteenth day of April twenty nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a few comments?
Yes.
I just want to thank you, Joanna, from all of the staff, because we've appreciated working with you, we've appreciated the value and the substance that you bring into the discussions at whatever committee, and of course, the council as well. And I just believe, and for all of you who were serving on the council at the time, it was a real act of political courage when Act Ten enabled, as Governor Walker called it, local governments to have the tools in place to cut their employees' salaries. And I came to you and asked that you not do that. And Joanna, you played a leadership role in, in that, and Mark was supportive, Susan, Howard, you were all on the council at that time, and that was an act of political courage. And the staff will not forget that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So we can do the presentations later, or do it now?
Howard?
Yeah, well, now, Mike and Howard have been here just about the same length of time, and I'm going to request Mike Davis to read the proclamation.
I better have Howard's in front of me then.
Prior, prior to you reading it, again, I would like to make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. All right.
All right.
Howard, do you want to say anything now or at the end?
I'll...
Okay, now, okay, go ahead.
At the end.
At the end, okay, all right. Okay, Mike.
All right, a proclamation honoring Howard Teal for his distinguished twenty-year tenure on the Middleton Common Council. Whereas Howard Teal has ably and faithfully served the City of Middleton for the past twenty years, representing the Fifth District, and whereas during his distinguished tenure, Howard has been a strong advocate for providing essential city services and personnel to match. Along with the entire council in twenty eleven, Howard made it possible that Middleton was the only city in the state not to cut its employees' pay in the aftermath of Act Ten. He also has participated in and provided support and advocacy for many successful city initiatives, including leadership of the Middleton Municipal Airport almost since its inception. Mark Opitz and I actually went back and looked at that to see if Howard was on the very first airport commission meeting, but it was like the second or third, shortly after he was Sound planning and inclusion of solar energy on various projects, we all know that Howard was the first person to ask if solar was going on a building. The hundred percent renewable energy resolution, redevelopment of downtown Middleton, development of important workforce housing and sustainability projects, establishment of the stormwater utility, new buildings for the fire, EMS, and police departments, as well as the municipal operations center, advocacy for the Pheasant Branch Conservancy and its trails network, support for numerous parks projects and extensive tax increment district projects and infrastructure throughout Middleton. And whereas Howard has served as past president of the city council, as well as on many city committees over his twenty years, including long tenures on the airport, fire, tourism, water resources management commissions, finance, public works, and conservancy lands committees, as well as the telecommunications commission, for those few of you who might remember that, and Pleasant View Golf Course Committee. Howard has also served for the decade of the nineteen eighties on the Plan Commission and Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. So his tenure really goes back forty years with city government, and for a fifty-year-old, that's really good. And whereas Howard Teal's folksy, common sense, and plainspoken leadership in Middleton City Government has been a tremendous asset over these past twenty years, and will miss his collection of flannel shirts in winter, as well as T-shirts all other parts of the year. He really cleaned it up tonight, didn't he? Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim and commend Howard for his twenty years of distinguished service, leadership, and good neighbor spirit on behalf of the residents and... On behalf of the residents and city of Middleton, we wish him and his family good health and happiness. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the council this 16th day of April 2019.
Is this, is this the part of the show where I can say something?
Yes.
Yes, Howard.
Normally, normally I would sit and ramble on. I've been accused of talking too much, council meetings for years, but I'll try not to do that, other than to say, thank you.
I just want to say one word, Howard. We may have differed on things, but I always admired and respected you, and always will. Okay, so should we now do the...
Yeah, go ahead.
Now I gotta get up.
No. No, this is fine.
I'm gonna fly. Oh, that's weird.
He's got his Sunday clothes on. Still got his Danny runners on. By the way, you should stay for your cake.
Please, as we have a really good cake there, and please, nobody should leave. It will be very soon that we will have the cake, so, and I, do I need to just apologize and die?
Ask for someone to make the motion.
Could you please make the motion to adjourn?
I move that the common council adjourns.
Sign and die.
Sign and die.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Well, so the common council adjourns, sign and die. Okay. Now, I call the order meeting, call to order the meeting of new council. How about this? So now, would you please come forward, Luke and Katie? So, city clerk is going to, to raise the newly elected officials, and then we're going to convene the council, right?
All right, are we ready? All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
Take your name. Having been elected to the office of alderperson...
Having been elected to the office of alderperson.
For the city of Middleton?
For the city of Middleton.
I swear that I will support...
I swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties...
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office...
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Now I'll have each of you come forward. Kathy, I'll have you come sign the book here. All right, Katie?
Thank you.
You're all set, congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. Okay. With that, I call the, and new council duly convened. And I call for the, first item is the election of the council president.
I'd like to nominate Dan Ramsey for council president.
Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Susan West for council president.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, the nomination is closed. Okay, so how do you perceive?
Guys, raise your hands. You have two candidates.
Okay, so all those in favor of Dan Ramsey, raise your hands. Okay, four. All those in favor of Susan West, raise your hands. Four, four, and I break the tie and vote for Dan Ramsey.
Can I ask if they talk first?
Can we?
Can they talk and share what their vision is before you break your tie?
We already voted, though.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. You want, I get...
I, I'd like to hear the vision of our president, our future president.
We haven't traditionally had discussions like that.
Okay, well, I break the tie in favor of Dan Ramsey. Okay, now to the second item, election of president pro temp.
I'd like to nominate Susan West, president pro temp.
Second.
Okay, so do you accept that, Susan?
You need to ask if there are other nominations.
Okay, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, nomination is closed. Okay, well, all those in favor of the approval of Susan West as a council president pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, Susan West, congratulations, you are the president pro temp. So now, there's the election of the plant commission representative.
I'd like to nominate Dan. I'd like to nominate Dan Ramsey, plant commission representative.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, nomination is closed. So, all those in favor of appointing the Dan Ramsey for plant commission representative from the city council, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.